Time, the meeting is called to order. Being recorded, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we will administer the oath for three new police I R Es. Uh Chief. You're here somewhere.
Oh, he's in the hall.
They're in the hallway, we will bring them in here. It's your show, Chief.
Alright, uh. We're gonna swear three officers, Brady Walters in, I'm glad you're all here to see this tonight. Thanks for coming. Uh. I'm gonna turn over the judge here, he's gonna swear right now, uh, we're gonna start with Wyatt Hathaway. Uh Wyatt comes to us from South Park, F D, right, about two years there. Um, and he's gonna make a career in McCandless.
Wyatt, Wyatt, uh, can you come up front here so everyone can see, please, thank you.
Family member, why someone pin his badge?
Thanks everyone for coming, it's a great pleasure, I've been invited to swear in three new officers. To, to help us along, ma'am, will you come forward? Go ahead. So all this video, you can pin the badge on them, okay? Alright. Please raise your right hand, and shoot after me. I Wyatt Hathaway.
I Wyatt Hathaway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Congratulations. Your wife will give you your badge.
Alright, next, we have Nick Bartishevich, and comes to us from Indiana Township, and he's chosen McCandless to. Make it his career as well.
Alright, is Chris being here? Please raise your right hand and repeat. I Nicholas Bartishevich.
I Nicholas Bartishevich.
Do solemn, solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Finally, tonight, we have Grant Frosty, Grant's recent graduate of the Municipal Police Academy. And he was about to take a job with the Middlesex Township Police Department, but we stole him from him.
Okay, um, please raise your right hand. I Grant Frosty.
I Grant Frosty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Of police officer with fidelity.
Congratulations.
So we welcome these three officers, we appreciate their time, we look forward to them working McCandless, I know you guys have some paperwork and stuff to do. We'll let you go, if any families want to get out now, by all means, take that time, go ahead and do it. Let everybody know that Officer Nick is also a lifetime resident of. Uh, we're letting people, uh, leave the room here, a few announcements. Um, the Heritage and Cultural Centers Shining Star Gala is November ninth at the Chadwick. For more information, you can search our website or speak to someone at the office here. Uh, another announcement, leaf bags will be available. Use this one second, I wanna make sure everyone can hear us here. Thanks, Chris. Uh, leaf bags will be available at Town Hall on October first, leaf pickup begins on October fourteenth. So mark your calendars for that. Any other announcements from other members of council? Yes?
I'd like to just publicly thank everybody who was involved with our Community Day last week. Including Abby Lacostic, our Public Works Department, our police officers. That many of the firefighters who are here all participated in our Community Day, we really appreciate it, I think it was one of the best ones yet. And thank you to everybody involved.
Next item on our agenda is the public hearing, I just wanna set a little ground rule here, um. This item had previously gone in front of our planning commission. Uh, the process is, the planning commission had made a ruling on this, and now it's presented today for a public hearing. There will be no vote tonight from council on this item, so tonight is basically a presentation of what is happening. Uh, comments will be made and on record, our solicitor will run this part of the meeting, and then the public meeting will end. This will likely show up later for a vote at council, RJ, when would that be?
The next vote, that would be the second meeting in October, which would be, yeah, I believe the twenty first?
So.
Excuse me, the twenty eighth, I apologize, that would be twenty eighth.
Council will see this item for a vote on the twenty eighth of October, just so everybody's aware of how this works. So at this time, I will turn it over to our solicitor, Mr. Corble, for the public hearing.
Thank you, President Singer. Alright, I am going to call to order the public hearing on Grace Wexford LLC's application. Uh, to rezone block and lot number ten seventy one dash P dash seventy two, currently zoned special district S D. To the moderate density residential district R M. Is proposing approximately sixty townhomes. Uh, at this time, Grace Wexford, the floor is yours to make a presentation to council. Um, and after you're completed, then we will open it up to public comments for, uh, this application, so. Grace Wexford, if you could step forward, enter a name and address for the record, please.
Rather, riding with Sheffler and Company seventeen twelve Mountain Ebo Road, Pittsburgh one five, one four three.
Right, head sir.
Good evening, everybody. Um, what we're proposing is pretty straightforward. It's just the rezoning of a center parcel between two other parcels which are already, uh, zone medium density. So, the three parcel combined is eighteen point seven acres. The special district is five point nine acres. Leaving the moderate, moderate density, twelve point eight acres. Uh, the reason we're asking for the rezoning is for. The plan to be consistent, it really doesn't make sense to have, say, townhomes on the west. An institutional parcel in the middle, and then townhomes on the right, what we'd like to do is make that continuous. So we can just put townhomes in continually. Uh, again. We're proposing approximately sixty townhomes, but. None of the land development has been done yet, we're just in the rezoning phase. I think there were some comments at the, uh, planning commission about land development, of course, we can't get into the weeds on that because. Without rezoning, we really can't. Uh, start the process of that. Of course, the property, as you mentioned, is located. Uh, on Old Perry Highway north of Wexford Healthcare and south of Woodhaven of Plan. Any questions?
Members of council, any questions? I don't believe so, no sir, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Um, at this point, we'll open the floor up to, uh, residents who may have a comment, um, please step forward. Um, speak into the microphone clearly, name and address for the record. And we'll give you the countdown, uh, Block will be here, but.
Sure.
If you wanna use it all, it's up to you.
That's okay. My name is, uh, Richard Polly, and I live in Woodhaven Oaks, I've lived there since nineteen eighty eight. I'm here to speak. Oh, ninety nine eighteen Conestoga Court. I'm here to speak in support of the zoning board decision that was five to two, not to allow the rezoning. Um, when the nursing home was put in many years ago. As part of allowing that nursing home to be put in. It was designated a special district behind it. So that there would be green space behind it where they could put, uh, different buildings in conjunction with the nursing home. Uh, now, forty eight years later, there's an attempt to, what I say, a bait and switch, now that the nursing home is there. Now they wanna have the, uh, zoning change to put these townhomes in there. If they put the townhomes in there, it will put an amazing. Stress on the traffic situation in that intersection that is. On McKnight Road, there's already five roads going in there. And we're concerned about the traffic and the convenience of our people coming in and out of, uh, our neighborhood. One of the purposes of zoning is to allow for. Growth in McCandless in a way that it, it fosters, uh, our neighborhoods, and we feel that this would be contrary. Uh, to fostering, uh, traffic in our area. In addition. Uh, on our side of McKnight Road, over the years. Uh, we sort of were, we're behind in valuations compared to the other side of McKnight Road. We're finally catching up, and our fear is that this would devalue the value of our properties. Um, it also would not be safe for our, uh, children in the neighborhood, we have no, uh, sidewalks and so forth. And, uh, the buses have to go up there, as it is now, we actually have somewhat a problem that we live with, with Saint Aden's. Coming through the neighborhood all the time after church and before the church. Um, and, and it's really, uh, really a, a problem with the traffic on both ends, because even up near the church. Uh, it, it, people are speeding up McKnight Road as they come up, and it's difficult, uh, to get out there, so. But we certainly are opposing, uh, that. The other thing is, uh, it, it. I'm sure the council is familiar that the area has been prone to flooding. Over the course of time, especially on Old Perry Highway there. Taking away the green space and putting townhomes up there would really. Uh, increase the flooding in this area and really would be unsafe, we've seen, I know. Uh, we have on the other side of the road, those, those homes going in, but even that, when they had the last, uh. Uh, big rain, even that caused on that side of the road to come down, and we think it would be even worse on, on our side of the road. Um. So for all those reasons, the, uh, the flooding potential, the safety, uh, the decrease in value. Uh, we certainly support what the zoning commission, uh, decided on a five to two vote. To, uh, not allow this change, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I didn't think I'd be so nervous. My name's Danielle Himes. I am a resident of Woodhaven Oaks, my address is nine nine one eight East Moccasin, so that comes to. Um. Sure, Himes, H I M E S. Okay, um, this is my son Ethan, and we are gonna speak also, um. I am currently acting president of the Woodhaven Oaks Civic Association. So in addition to speaking for myself tonight, I also speak on behalf of the one hundred and thirty plus homes in the Woodhaven Oaks community. Um, and we, uh, the rezoning of parcel, uh, from special district to moderate density residential would significantly impact. The neighborhood of Woodhaven Oaks, and we are opposed to the rezoning of this partial. Uh, so again, uh, we side with the planning commission and, and their vote for the five to two vote. Um, one of the things that I did want to just stress, I'm sure that you guys are super familiar with McCandless Code, right? Very fun, super dry material, but if you don't mind me reading just a section of it today, I did want to point out that the McCandless Code. Thirteen oh one, general zoning provisions, article one twenty proposes. This zoning code is intended to guide future growth, growth and development by regulating land uses within the town of McCandless. Blah, 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 blah. The provisions of this code are the minimum requirements to achieve the following purposes, and this is what I do wanna highlight. That A, we provide a pleasant, attractive, healthy, safe, and convenient environment for living, working, shopping, education, and recreation. B, we preserve and improve the natural environment, we wanna, hope that you would remember that point. Um, C, increase property values, employment opportunities, and the economic base of the community. D, provide safe, adequate, and attractive housing for all stages of life. We do have the senior home that's there right next to it. And E, the final point, this is a big one, to reduce losses from flooding. Um, so something that my son Ethan has here is, we'd like to share with you some of the pictures of the flooding that has been happening on Old Perry Highway. Down at the bottom of the hill, which would be directly below this special district. Um, and this is already some reflooded, or flooding that has happened, this is a picture from September twenty twenty three. So if you wanna actually show the folks here, and then you can pass that around, that's one picture of some of the flooding. You wanna show them the next one, buddy? Here's an aerial shot of the flooding. You can keep showing the pictures while I keep talking. Thank you. So the existing green space or the riparian zone has absorbed rainwater runoff from the elevated parts of the Woodhaven Oaks community. If this riparian zone is removed and replaced by buildings and parking lots, that water runoff will drain onto Old Perry Highway. And further exacerbate this problem. Old Perry Highway is prone to flooding due to heavy downpours and sustained storms. The higher flood risk may increase flood insurance premiums for existing homeowners and businesses along Pine Creek. Adding financial strain to current residents and small businesses that are already existing in the area. Addressing the increased risk of flooding might require costly upgrades to local infrastructure such as enhanced draining systems or flood barriers. Potentially diverting resources from other community needs. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we really pointed that out, in addition to the points that were already made about safety. Uh, the livability of our area, decreased property values, and. The points that I made from the McCandless Code that's already in there, right? Um, and I also just wanted to take a moment, um, and we do have a lot of members of our community or of our neighborhood that are here supporting, uh, Woodhaven Oaks. If everybody here could just raise your hand for a moment. And we are all opposed to the rezoning, so we just wanted to, maybe not everybody. There's more, yeah, there's more outside here. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Stacey Schappert of nine eight nine three West Moccasin Trail, Westford, PA. Sorry, I know it's flattering, Schappert is S C H A P P E R T. And I'm at nine eight nine three. With West Moccasin Trail. And I'm here because I'm opposed to changing, uh, zoning of this side of the partial. Uh, my daughter is here also to speak about what this land looks like. Um, I really believe, my husband believes that there's a reason why the township has zoned it this way, and we think it's very unfair. That someone comes in knowing what it's zoned, and expecting it to be changed to meet their needs. When it has been zoned that way for a particular reason. Um, because the individual owns all three parcels, it's not landlocked, he has access to all three portions. Um, but we can tell you, any of the neighbors can tell you that that center part, once you get beyond your neighborhood, it's a ravine. My daughter is a wilderness survivalist, she's always in the woods. Uh, chasing turkeys and deer and finding salamanders and frogs. She's been back there and into that piece, and she's a climber, by the way. But when she goes down into that ravine, she can't climb up, it is that steep that she has to come out by the nursing home. And she gets stuck in the mud there because it's all swamp and wetland. And she can talk about what kinda animals live back there, but we believe that there's a reason why the township hasn't zoned the way it is. Um, the pieces on the other two sides are much different than that centerpiece. Uh, is a very steep piece of land, and I think after our last meeting, everyone who was here can tell, and we all thought stuck. In the flooding on Lazier Drive and Pine Creek. And taking down any green space is only gonna add to that problem. It's common sense, we have areas that are already flooding. And we don't want. This cost of dealing with this flooding to be pushed onto the township, because this will be the township's problem. The flooding continues, something will have to be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I am Abby Schappert, uh, I live at nine eight nine three West Moccasin Trail. Um, I am no expert in most things like technicalities or. The financing of this whole thing. What I do know is, I, she said, I'm a naturalist, I have a passion for. Being outdoors and wildlife, and everything she said was absolutely correct. After you get in that woods, there's a trail around the outside, but down in the middle, it's just marsh, and it's very steep. I have been stuck in there, there's high weeds, and it's just water. And, I, but the main point I wanted to touch on is that we have a very. Healthy ecosystem living in that marshy area. There's a creek that flows through near the middle of the marsh, it comes out near, near a building, and it has a healthy population of. Small salamanders and other little critters, water bugs, and we, I've seen turkey is raising children, baby turkey is in there. And I have, I've seen, we know, all know the deer issues, I'm sure we all know about that, and, and the gardens, but, um. I think what a lot of people don't realize is building buildings in there pretty much eliminates their habitat, pushing them out towards us and towards roads. Meaning we have, uh, we'd likely have a lot more deer-related accidents on roads, not to mention the flooding. On top of that. Um, there's all sorts of amazing wildlife, and I've been going in there since I was, I don't know. Maybe like less than ten. Probably almost like seven. And I have always found such a passion for being in there, it's what started my entire love for nature as, as, as a child. And now I am taking, um, ecological sciences class in school because of that passion. So I just wanted to touch on that. Throw in some information, and that's, that's pretty much all I have to add. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you for your comments. I don't know if I can ruin Abby's stuff by pocketing, but Jackson Agastoni, that's A G O. S T O, and I. Ninety eight forty covered wagon car. Thank you. Uh, so again, my primary concerns are the livability in the wildlife, I think Abby touched on the wildlife maybe a couple of times. Uh, but when my wife and I first moved in, moved in twenty something years ago. Um, we were looking at the house, it was, it's, you know, no offense, but it's kind of a boring colonial on the outside. But we walked through, opened the back deck, and we looked out back, there is this beautiful park-like atmosphere with all of these trees. You could hear the dozens of different species of birds. You could, the deer were in the back, we get foxes, we get turkeys, we get some raccoons, we get some deer. But you know, you get, you, you know, you give a little, take a little. Um, so should this, uh, rezoning happen, and should the development plans go forward? Those woods have to be taken down to make it economical to build, I think that much is obvious, right? So I go from having a house with a beautiful park-like atmosphere, with lots of beautiful animals, I can go out every morning and hear the birds chirp. That would all be gone in an instant, right, we see what's happened, is happening, um. Across nineteen where the new development is happening, I get to hear that every single day. Um, there's already enough noise from the construction, and from the traffic down below, if those trees are gone. I don't think that's gonna help the noise at all, right? So that would pretty much destroy any relaxation we have in our own backyard. Right? I'm not opposed to new development, I understand some of those things have to happen, I just don't think it's a good idea back there. So how that pertains to the rezoning is because, for the last, I think, as Mr. Polly pointed out, the last almost fifty years. Um, that mixed zoning has been an extreme barrier to development. No one's gonna go into that special district and build another nursing home, because there's not enough room there, right? Um, as, uh, the gentleman from the engineering firm, right, pointed out, it's not economical to build townhomes. Split like that on either side of the moderate density, that's not really gonna make sense either. Especially given that they're gonna need to have road access to both of those houses, right? So we know one of the entrances is on Old Perry Highway, that would mean the other entry or exit's gonna have to be off Newhart. Which means they're going to have to tear someone's house down to do that. Right, which, you know, rumor has it, the house is already been purchased for over selling price on there, which. I can only guess with the clear intent to tear that house down and put another roadway there. Right? So hopefully, you know, that you should be clear, I'm no on the rezoning, okay? Um, hopefully, I'm echoing a lot of my neighbor's viewpoint, specifically my property borders. That development wants to happen, and I wanna keep it that way, right, personally. But thanks for your time.
Thank you.
John Mankevich, M A N K E V I C H. And we live on Newhart Boulevard. In fact, our property borders this proposed townhouse property. Nine nine four nine. And we've been here approximately going on two decades, and. Is there any other people from Newhart? Quite a few, and we are also concerned about, uh, getting off of Newhart Boulevard. Without going through Woodhaven and everything else to get up onto Perry Highway. You can't go south once you get up there. And as far as flooding and the people even on Ryman Road, and I think we have a few people there from Ryman Road, so it all converges. Uh. And you get stuck with that flooding, that young, young man showed us the pictures of. And I know a little brother by construction, I was a carpenter most of my life. And as far as the retention, there's no place to put the pond like across the street on the southern, the southern end of, uh, McKnight Road. Coming down the hill. They have to put it underground, what's that gonna do to the well systems that a lot of people have? For their gardens and different things, that saved me a lot of money with all the water and sewage bills going up lately. But, uh, again, the flooding. But uh, again, the flooding, getting off a New Heart Boulevard, getting off Ryman Road, getting off Old Perry Highway. It's, it's just gonna be so hectic, and when they do tear that other house down, the one we think it's gonna be. It's halfway up New Heart Boulevard. My wife calls that street, it could be an Olympic ski jump area as far as the hill. It's always been taken care of because of the snow with the school buses. But getting into that new townhouse plan is gonna be pain in the butt. Making right turns or left turns off the hill. It's gonna be really kind of, kind of crazy, it'll probably be dangerous for. People coming up the hill, down the hill in the winter, summertime. It'll be speeding in and out of everywhere, just like they have it over in the other plan, so uh. I've, and you guys, there's a couple of people I've read in the magazines when you were running for office, uh, you're very uh. Uh, involved in the ecosystem, in the environment, and somebody else was talking about retention plans. And really looking into that as far as all the water runoff. You figure for sixty townhouses, the square footage on roofs, all the. Uh, asphalt that's gonna get down or concrete for the roads and everything else, that water has to go somewhere instead of going into the ground. Where people down there in the nursing home will get flooded too, but thank you very much for your time and I appreciate it.
Hi, I figured I could better go post after my husband so I didn't have to miss, re- respell the name. So I'm Jackie Weaver, W E A B E R hyphen Agastoni. A G O S T O and I, same address, nine eight four zero covered wagon port. So um, I certainly agree with what everybody has said already, and I have no major points to add, but want to tell you a personal story. So when we moved here to the North Hills, um, we chose intentionally to live in Woodhaven Oaks. Because it was named Woodhaven Oaks, and because there was beautiful trees, right? It's an already established. Older neighborhood that was already developed. And like my husband said, you know, certainly looking out, sitting on our back deck and seeing the trees is magical. And we've raised our daughter in that house, and the congestion that. More roads is going to contribute to the entire area. Is going to be tremendous, I had to wait for three cycles of lights the other day just to get out onto McKnight Road. Because of traffic already coming from the other side, not even from my neighborhood. So um, you know, the flooding is apparent, it is clear we all have, you know, pictures of our basements and such already. Um, and you know, I, this certainly rezoning this will not at all improve any of the existing neighbors' livability. In that area, you're going to lose the hiking trails, we're going to lose the nature that belongs behind our houses. And we're going to lose the entire personality of what is called Woodhaven Oaks. So please vote to leave my trees alone and to preserve the environment that we already have in our neighborhood. I really appreciate your time, thanks.
Hello, my name's Carol Ellis, I live at nine eight six five Tomahawk Trail. L S E L L I S. Nine eight six five Tomahawk. So I don't know anything about zoning or any of this, I actually had to have my neighbor explain it all to me the other day. Um, I'm here because I'm a mom of five children, I have five kids, we've lived in our house for five years. Um, anyone in this neighborhood probably has seen one of my kids riding their bikes, scooters, pogo sticks, rollerblades. They're all over the neighborhood, it is a safe place. Bringing in another additional sixty houses is just gonna add more traffic. I mean, this is one of the only neighborhoods that I feel that I can just let my kids roam, not roam, but play out in the streets, be safe. I don't want more traffic added to this neighborhood, in addition to that. Our children go to the wonderful McKnight Elementary School, it is one of the biggest, I believe it is the biggest elementary school in the district. Um, my daughter's in fifth grade, there are almost a hundred and fifty fifth grade students in that school alone. And I just don't see how they could add in more families, more students into that school.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for letting me speak, my name is David. Russ Forsky, S O R U S, and Sam, B as in boy, A R S K Y. I live at nine nine seven zero New Heart Boulevard. Uh, I'm a concerned citizen for the people in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has a lot of children up in it, Woodhaven Oaks proper. I live on a corner of New Heart and Rustic. That area has just been designated a ten mile an hour speed limit. Because people were going faster than that, twenty-five and so forth. We have seen, I lived in New Heart Boulevard for thirty-eight years. When I bought the house, it was Woodhaven Oaks with all the trees and so forth while I bought it. I wanted someplace where it was secluded and with nature. So with being there, I've seen people going over the hillside, tow trucks pulling them up and so forth. What's going on in the neighborhood is you have a lot of children, buses coming up. New Heart Boulevard to pick up the kids in the morning, and they go up into the Woodhaven Oaks and pick up people. If you build this New Heart Pan, what they're gonna have to do is come down New Heart. And what about the children to get left off at buses and wait for buses? You can't get down the street as it is. I leave for work every morning between five thirty, quarter to six, and I still have a tough time leaving at that time getting. Through the light because of the traffic. So if you're gonna compound it with sixty more homes, you're gonna then force people to go up the hill to the plan where the kids are. Do you really wanna put the children's safety in harm's way? And I, I don't think that's a wide, wise and prudent thing. We're here for the community, everybody's here to support you guys voting against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
You guys are gonna think I'm a little bit silly, but I am the alter ego of Mr. Frog. Um, Mr. Frog is coming here to speak on behalf of the neighborhood of Woodhaven Oaks. Mr. Frog is a statue that lives in front of my house, and children in my neighborhood come by every day to talk to Mr. Frog. Leave him notes and get gifts from him. One year, Mr. Frog had friendship bracelets for the beginning day of school. So I have a crowd in front of my house, this started because of COVID. And uh, two little boys from my neighborhood, I don't want to name them, but um, they stopped by to visit my frog. And for the last three years, the frog has been talking to every child in that neighborhood that. So I'm getting a little emotional because I love every kid in this neighborhood. I'm a teacher of Pine Richland and kids are my life. And if one of them got hurt, I would never forgive myself for putting Mr. Frog out there. So on behalf of Mr. Frog, his mom, and all the frogs that live in my neighborhood, including the rocks, thanks guys. Put little rocks out, and the kids love it and I love it, and I don't want to see that ruined. It's for the kids, thank you.
Anybody else? Oh. Wait, Mr. Dorsh, we have one more resident comment first.
I didn't know I was gonna have to follow. This is Frog, so now I'll mention it. My name's Ashley Haverlock, A J E E R L A C R. Mrs. Frog really did me in, but anyway, my daughter visits Mr. Frog every single week. Um, she's also just learned to ride her bike on the streets of Woodhaven Oaks. And I've had the blessing to be able to work with, watch, and care for many other children in our neighborhood. So I'm not gonna use my full time, I'm not going to reiterate what so many of my neighbors have already said. But I just wanted to let you guys know on the record, I also oppose the rezoning, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Mr. Dorsh.
D I E T R I C H. D I E T R I C H is my first name, Tric. K E L L E Y is my last name. Nine eight four three. Tomahawk Trail. I came here expecting to say something very different. I am a little bit overwhelmed. Um, a government connection, I work for the county comptroller and I take my job very seriously. And speaking to people and to my neighbors, truly take part in government is so beautiful. I know all of you feel the same way, so while you are listening to our neighbors. And experiencing what's happening in our community, I don't see how anybody would be able to vote to. Change the zoning of this parcel of land. I don't have. Hi, um, Abby, I know finances, that's what I do for my job, and I sure hope that you can keep experiencing nature in our. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Anybody else? Mr. Dorsh, third time's a. Good evening, everyone, my name is Larry Dorsh, D O R S C H. Uh, owner by contract of the three parcels located. Uh, where we're talking about off of Tomahawk. Um, as, as it was brought up, um, we have three different parcels. Uh, the two end pieces are zoned RM, um, medium density. Uh, the middle parcel is owned special district. Our project would call for the continuation of a townhouse project. Number of units at this point is yet to be determined. I will say that there are some challenging aspects to the, to the center portion. Um, out of the nineteen acre property, the center portion's roughly five acres, so it's, um, you know, it's. Uh, you know, it, it has some challenging attributes to it and some beauty to it as well. Um, some of the issues that the neighbors brought up, and I applaud the neighbor, I mean, I'd like to see in this, I'm not the enemy, by the way. Um, you know, some of these issues with stormwater that currently exist may in fact get solved by a development project. Um, that, that happens more often than not. Um, I've always worked together with the community to try to make the best project that we could possibly make. The only one, and I would like to draw some rumors. Uh, the way we have it planned, I, we have no access on the Nicholson or Nichols or. New Heart, on the New Heart, uh, we have no home under agreement on New Heart. Um, so that's news to me tonight. Um, but what I would like to say, that the special zoning, the special district zoning. You know, has some other, you know, uses and allowed developments that are far less attractive, at least if I was a neighbor. Uh, to a, to a, you know, a townhouse project. You know, some of them being, for example, a daycare facility. Um, a just, a um, transportation facility. Uh, oil and gas under special condition, um, conditional use rather is allowed. Um, windmills are allowed, I mean, there are some things that can happen there. Irregardless if um, this project is totally, or this five acres is owned to accommodate what we're doing on either side. So I just wanted to make that point clear. Um, what we plan or what our plans call for are, is a different product mix and exists in that neighbor, that neighborhood of McCandless. Uh, we're looking at larger townhomes, twenty, I think twenty-four, twenty-eight foot wide product. Uh, project that we did somewhere in uh, in um, Peter's Township. Uh, the market, uh, the market pricing in those units started about five hundred and go to six and a quarter. I mean, these are, these are higher end, uh, mostly attractive to empty nesters. Um, that uh, that want to downsize and some of the larger homes in the community. And still want to be part of the community and stay in the community, it uh, it provides an option for them. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, with the, the builder we're working with is, is a McCandless builder, so certainly aware of uh, of what, what that means, so. Um, just wanted to let everyone know who I am and, and let you understand that we're not the enemy. Um, but there can be other development in that special district, I think that uh, be a lot more concerning than, than a townhouse program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Procedure question, are we allowed to speak more than once?
Sure.
Thank you. Jackie Weaver, Agastoni on the list. First for me.
Okay, well, let's see.
Walking number thirteen, okay, thank you. Um. Not in rebuttal, but just in listening to that. All that means to me is that there's going to be potentially a hundred and twenty extra cars that are fancy. Because they're, you know, expensive homes with expensive cars, it doesn't cut down on the number of cars. That doesn't change anything about anything we've already stated. So I found none of that compelling and wanted to voice that just in case somebody here did, so, thank you.
I would also like to speak a second time while I'm already on the list. Do you need it again, or?
Awesome, and please, just real quick, for the time of everyone here, if you're going to speak a second time, please try to keep timely for everyone's sake.
Yeah, I had some time left from about five minutes before.
Thank you.
I appreciate the clarification on the New Heart Boulevard thing, you know, we want to make a informed decision as much as we can, so I appreciate that. Um, that does raise a challenge with that sketch though, because, and again, I understand the sketch is just a sketch, you can't. You can't make a plan, a developed plan until you have the zone and do your, spend the money on the research. But that is a very long cul-de-sac, which is totally against McCandless regulations as it stands today. So there were, there will very likely either need to be a smaller number of townhomes, still behind my property, by the way. Or they will have to acquire another outlet, another property, one way or another, to get past that, that zone. Um, that was, you know, pretty much what I wanted to bring up, so thanks for the second chance.
Thank you for your comments.
There are no further comments, that will uh, wrap up public hearing. Yeah, sure.
This is a great time to talk about zoning, uh, said the planning director. So, um, as we heard earlier, we do not vote the same night as the rezoning hearings. We legally cannot vote the same night, even if we wanted to, but the vote has already been scheduled for the second council meeting in October. Um, either, you know, no sooner than that date, town council can take up to sixty days, I believe, from the closing of a public hearing to deliberate. But that is the earliest date we would expect them to vote. Um, I just want to throw a couple of things out there for people that, I, I know some of you were at the planning commission, and I recognize your faces, your comments and everything. Um, but for those of you who weren't, what we saw tonight was a concept plan that any developer that requests a rezoning submits. A concept plan is non-binding, that means that this has not been reviewed to our development standards. This has not been reviewed to our zoning code, it's what the developers throwing out there is their idea of what they'd really like to do. Yes. If a development results from a rezoning approval. It has to go through our full review process that goes to the town engineers, that's reviewed to both our subdivision and land development ordinance, which is like streets. Um, stormwater landscaping, infrastructure, and then our zoning ordinance, which is how big can your house be? How big is the box that you can put something on a lot? So there is no guarantee that what concept plan was presented tonight is compliant with either of those things. Because the developer does not make the investment to design that out until they know if they even have the option of moving forward. That is typical of what you see of this process. Um, I don't know that we'll get that far, we have a very packed room with one unified opinion, it would seem. Um, but if we do, please know that we will be. Um, but if we do, please know that we will be reviewing any development to the standards of both our zoning and subdivision and land development ordinance. And our stormwater ordinance, which locally is one of the strongest in the county. That's all, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you for that clarification, RJ, I believe there is one question for you.
Um. On the vote itself. How many votes? How many affirmatives does it take? To pass this kind of a vote?
Be a majority of council present.
Yeah, I believe actually for zoning ordinances, you specifically need a majority of four.
There you go.
Yes.
Four. Four votes in the affirmative, yes.
So. Pardon me for saying this, but there's a goal without saying. That. Any member that might have financial interest. Here. Or, uh, benefit in some way financially would automatically recuse himself from voting.
Um, so. That's a hypothetical, I mean, are you? So to the extent that that was, uh, uh, occurring, they would be required under the State Ethics Act to abstain from voting and to disclose why in a written memorandum to the rest of the council. So, yes, they would have to recuse us.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, RJ, or to the phone? When I spoke to you, you had said that if the traffic had been issued with this plan, the Pendoc would get involved. You know, the lights and cetera might happen, you could explain that to these people?
Sure, um, I'm just gonna. Does this work? Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay, sorry, I don't really want to talk with my back to everyone, so. Um, yes, we do also in, I'm just gonna say Saldo now instead of subdivision and land development ordinance, because that's a mouthful and we just kind of call it the Saldo in the industry, right? So a Saldo does also include traffic review standards. Um, there are a couple of different thresholds, one is number of trips and that's calculated by, you know, basically. Standardized expectations for, you know, a type of housing unit, how many times people are coming and going. Um, from that development, off the top of my head, I don't know that this one would trigger it alone, however. Simply due to its proximity to a state road, which is signalized, I would think that it's highly likely that Pendoc would require some sort of. Traffic assessment for whether the light can handle it. I don't know. Again, whether anything of this size would trigger thresholds at Pendoc's review. Um, I will say that in general, what the state considers a lot of traffic is not necessarily what an average person living on a street. Considers a lot of traffic, but that said, something like this might still. Kick off a review of the lights that are on the state road. Um, and if. There is a requirement to upgrade or make any changes to lights on state roads, those are the responsibilities of developers.
Since the vote was five to two by the voting committee, will the council be able to see what the five people that voted against it said at the meeting, since it was recorded? And.
And in fact, you all can, our planning commission videos are posted publicly online, usually within the week after they occur. But that's also part of my monthly reports, so, yes. Okay. Thank you all.
That's the end of the public hearing.
Alright, so at this point, if there is anybody who would like to leave, we'll do that, just so. We're not causing commotion as we continue things, give, uh, a minute or two here.
Wow. They're here, we're here.
Our next item. Thank you for that. Uh, our next item is public comment on agenda items only, understand this is the time presented for any item that's on the agenda. Anything that's not on the agenda, you'll provide a time at the end for public comment. So right now, as for anything on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address.
Ellen Wright, nine six three five, Old Coomer Road, Allison Park Field, one five one oh one. I want to thank the town manager for including comment his report in the, um. Agenda packet, it's very nice to be able to see that. Um, I'm concerned. That, um, for tonight's public hearing and for the information about the reach of Carson Eco Village. That the minutes. For meetings that have already occurred and been approved are not posted online. Specifically, the planning commission. Had, um. Minutes from August sixth that were approved on nine three, those minutes are not posted online. Um, the town council. Met. I hope I haven't reversed these, but the town council has also had a meeting on September ninth. And they approved the minutes for August twenty-sixth, and those meetings are not posted online. So when the gentleman was referring to, will. Will council be able to see those minutes, you may have received those in your packets, but they're not posted. So that the public can see them prior to the public meeting tonight. And, um. Well, prior to the vote on the Rachel Carson. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on agenda items? There are none, uh, we're going to get into the reports of committees. Uh, this time I'll turn it over to, uh, Mister Casey for administration. Oh, I'm so sorry, I passed right over that, thank you, Gresh. Uh, your minutes for September ninth were sent out in the agenda packet. Uh, there, we need a motion, uh, first, their motion to approve. Motion, Mr. Arlo, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Jeter, are there any additions or changes?
I will abstain, I was not here.
Yeah, there is an abstention.
Abstain. I wasn't here.
Abstentions, let's do a roll call, vote, word one. Aye, aye. Two, abstained.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Abstain, motion carries, minutes were approved. Now, thank you, Trish. Uh, reports of committees, Mister Casey, please take it from here.
Okay, staff reports.
Communications was in our packet, I believe.
Uh, I gotta. Communications, do you want to speak to them?
Uh, I know that there has been, you know, several. Uh, updates to the website and there was some. Work on some news pieces, uh, some releases with the, uh, new manager hire, uh, that was completed, so. Um, there were some other, I, you know, lower level items that were in the report.
Thank you. I don't. Is it safe to assume we don't have any?
We do not have a junior council person who can see.
No junior council members today. Liaison reports. Mister Arlo.
Kansas Industrial Development Authority, there was no meeting.
Hey, North Hills Council of Governments, Mister Singer.
No meeting, but one coming up here at the end of the month.
Hey, are there any public comments on administration and finance committee items? Okay, if not, then I will turn it over to Mister Arlo.
Planning and zoning committee, uh, staff reports.
Here I am again, slightly smaller room, not much. Alright, so, um. I have a little bit of a longer section on the Eco Village tonight. My apologies in advance, I'll try to be efficient with my time, um, but we do have that land development approval on the agenda, so. Um. There are a handful of modification requests we're gonna need to go over. I'll knock the easy one out first, we had a simple subdivision review, the Shram Simple Subdivision Plan that is off Harmony Drive. Um. They call them simple because they are, it's one lot into two. Um, the resident wants to subdivide his property, sell off the portion that currently has a garage on it so that he can downsize and, you know, presumably somebody would build. One home. On that property. Um, there are some administrative formatting comments that still need to be worked out, as is typical, we have those in Gateways Review Letters. Um, there's not really anything material that would prevent us from wanting to move forward with this one, but we would need to get all of those comments addressed before. We were to execute the subdivision plan. Um, one of them is that there is a planning module for the sewage facilities required through. I believe it's Alka-San, because this goes to the Alka-San watershed. Um, treatment. Area rather than MTSA. Um, and they do not do exemption mailers, that's nothing that we all really need to worry about, other than at some point down the road, assuming Alka-San approves this one lot. Construction, that you all would have to vote on a resolution. Potentially updating our sewage planning. Um, for one lot, that's about as minor as you get, but that's what Alka-San requires, so. Um, any questions about that one? Okay. Moving on to what I thought was the big item of the night, Rachel Carson Eco Village approval. Um, so this, and you have an additional. Staff report in your packet. That lists in more detail summary of previous activity, as well as a discussion of each of the modification requests that the Eco Village Group is, um. Requesting, so just for a refresher, anyone that wasn't here at the beginning, the Rachel Carson Eco Village is a co-op resident group, it is. Proposed to be developed by the people that would like to live there. Um, they first came to town council. Towards the beginning of the year, uh, to switch a. A parcel from SD to RM. Um, that is right off of the Sisters of Divine Providence campus, uh, they are building a collection of two-unit and three-unit. Buildings, um. They would have basically a shared community function where they would make decisions as a group, the internal. Um. Road, as it were, it's really just an emergency access path would be privately owned, there are no public streets being created by this, and there is no public frontage. Because UPMC owns a teeny tiny little sliver of property in between the actual property that was the Sisters of Divine Providence and Cumberland Road. Um, when the sisters subdivided that off in twenty twenty-one, I believe. We, uh, made it a condition that they would have to get a permanent access easement from UPMC to enter the site as a way to. Deal with that odd condition where there was no public frontage, that was granted, and the Eco Village would be using that for their resident shared parking lot, which would come off of Cumberland. Um. Anyway, the, the rezoning request was approved in the spring. Uh, they got a couple variances related to parking, in this case, it was things that, you know, is, as far as we took the code when we redid it. Um, to kind of allow more flexibility, we didn't really contemplate that there would be a carless development necessarily. So they needed a couple of variances, one to allow a parking lot to be in their front yard, since they don't really. Have front yards. Um, and, but. It was closer to the street than one of the buildings, to locate it within the middle of the property, they would have had to cut down quite a few five hundred year old trees, so that one was granted. Um, the other one was to allow for half of their parking requirement to be met. Off-site, in this case, over on the Sisters of Divine Providence campus, there's a pathway that goes to the land that was subdivided by the sisters. Um, and they have. Far more parking than they need, and they have parking passes to, you know, back that up. Um, so we do have a requirement in our code that residential parking be met on the same lot, if it's shared parking, that variance was granted because it was pretty clear, aside from a, you know, a cross. Boundary access agreement that the sisters wanted to work with the Eco Village and that this was sort of a tandem. Um, thing, at least in the spirit of cooperation, going on between the two groups, so that one made sense, they got both of those variances and came to the planning commission. Um. Most of the review, to be honest, in terms of talking about what the plan does, what it looks like, you know, sort of the, the material concerns. To it. Were handled at the rezoning request stage, there's not much that's changed from the concept, other than moving a few buildings around to meet. Um, some of the requirements of the fire marshal for how close a fire truck would need to, you know, be able to get. All around the building, um, buildings are going to be sprinkled. Also, worth noting. Um. Yeah, I, I, I think, I think most of us have seen this one a few times, so, you know, I can certainly talk more about the nature and function of the development, but unless I hear any questions, I'm gonna assume we're all pretty comfortable with that. Right?
So the road, what's the road made out of?
Um, so, there is a reinforced turf and geogrid surface that is being used rather than asphalt, right? Both, both, alright, correct me, please. Twelve foot of asphalt. Yes. Eight feet of reinforced turf, which also kind of functions as the sidewalk for that road internally, although frankly, since it's only supposed to be used for emergency access or deliveries up to, you know, their one common area. Um, pretty much the whole thing functions as a walking path for the development. Um, but we also, part of our review with Gateway was making sure that, um, we had that whole surface. All the way, you know, from where you get into the hammerhead turnaround at the end. Um, weight rated, so that it could handle, or what was it, seventy-five thousand? Yeah, to seventy-five thousand pounds. Um, basically, there are just ways that you can vary. How that material is put down, like the thickness or, or the load that it can bear, and so we're making sure that it has to be spec to handle that.
Will maintain that road.
That would be the Eco Village, yes, that's, that's a private drive. Not us.
And the fire marshal's okay with the hammerhead?
Yes, yes, it met his requirements for the turning template, his main thing was making sure that it could bear the weight of the vehicles, and that was what we were just. Talking about with the geogrid.
That was my question.
Regarding the road, um, was it being a private road with delivery and emergency use only? What's to stop someone from just taking a drive down? Anyway, just to take a look at this cool new place.
Right, well, they shouldn't, because that would be trespassing, um, but, but.
Nobody's gonna say.
Right.
Let's check this out.
Right, so this came up at the zoning hearing board, um, when they were talking about, you know, the couple of different variance requests about. Posting, you know, the, the roads to make sure that it's clear that there are private access, um. That also came up when we were talking about the shared. Parking lot area, because one of the modification requests in here is to allow for sort of a straightaway portion of that to be narrower. Um, just because there's some grading that would encroach on wetlands on the site, if they were to wind the road further. And so it's my understanding that the intent is to post both of those pretty well, yes, I'm getting a nod from, um, the developers. To make sure that everybody knows that that's private property, you know, you shouldn't be driving down there, because we don't want anybody driving down there that doesn't know what they're getting into, essentially. Okay, gonna run through these modification requests really quickly, so. Um, there are six in total, which is a higher number than we usually see, but you know, they all make sense, I think, at least in terms of the uniqueness of this development. Um, that you don't really see things like that too often, so to your question, Mister Casey, uh, we have an internal sidewalk waiver on the access drive. That eight-foot reinforced turf shoulder is what would be, um, functioning essentially as a sidewalk. Um. You know, this requirement is in our code because it's meant to ensure that there is internal walkability for shared plans, in this case, everybody that's living there is in favor of it. Um, so it's not like we're not, you know, providing an amenity by granting this modification request. Number two, hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles, we already hit on that one. Uh, number three, landscaping buffer along Cumberland Road, so there is a small section. Um. In that access easement that we talked about through UPMC's property, where the utilities also come through. In that area, they cannot plant, um, anything. Due to those utility easement agreements, um. It, it would be my recommendation that the enormous amount of vegetation that's being preserved and saved throughout the site meets the spirit of the code just as well. Um. Shared access drive width, I just mentioned this, you know, there is a section that i- is proposed to be narrower just due to grading and, you know, trying to minimize the negative impacts, um, on wetlands and existing vegetation. Uh, nobody should be using this parking lot. That doesn't know that this is the condition that they need to be careful when somebody is entering. Um, the drive aisle, because this parking lot is for residents exclusively, it's not for visitors, visitors are meant to park at the Sisters of Divine Providence overflow area, if. They, um, have anyone parking. Number.
To that point. How will you handle Amazon and UPS?
So the, um, the wider emergency vehicle access road, that's the one that Amazon or any other deliveries would be coming down, that narrower access drive is exclusively for the shared residence parking lot. Um. Number five is a bit weird, infiltration area loading ratio is the title that I've given this, the simplest way to put it is that we typically have a certain amount of ground. That is allowed to drain into a stormwater facility, that code was written under the assumption that we would have traditional development with yards, streets, sidewalks, you know, things that cause a lot more impervious surface area compared to the overall site. Than this development. Um, so to not grant this modification would mean that they would have to enlarge their stormwater facility. Footprint so significantly that they would be taking out those heritage trees or encroaching upon wetlands to meet our stormwater. Code, um, which is not necessarily what we're going for there. Um, and then number five. This one was actually, or excuse me, number six. The stormwater one was number five, number six is a two. Height to one vertical, uh, fill slope ratio, this request was actually reduced from when it came to the planning commission, in some locations for, um, the stormwater facilities, they had a one-to-one request, shallow, but still. There in some of the rain gardens, they were able to eliminate that. Um, there are some retaining walls behind some of the residential units. Um, that they're requesting a two-to-one slope, this is pretty consistent with what we've granted in other developments, when that request was supported by a geotechnical report. Which this one is. Um, so we have no reason to not. Recommend that one for approval. Um, the rest of the staff report is those standard. Conditions of approval that usually get popped into the larger developments, third-party permits that never get granted in the span of time that we have to review developments. Um, making sure that the developers' agreement signed, that any required bonding is completed, all of that typical stuff, um, and so that is contemplated in the. Um, and so that is contemplated in the final approval motion should you approve the development.
And just for reference, planning commission, the majority of planning commission uh agreed with all of these modifications.
Yes, so I almost all of them were unanimous. I think the one that had a couple. Yeah, I I think, I think that was the shared access drive with, and I guess they were just not. Necessarily satisfied by the explanation of.
But the majority did agree.
Yes, it was four to two, in favor. The rest were unanimous. That's all that I have. Do you have any other questions for me? Okay, in that case, um, let me know as we get to the development motions if you have any other thoughts. But uh, that's it for me. Alright.
Keep us rolling, Doug. Planning Commission, that gave me uh, attended earlier this month, uh, meeting minutes are in your package. Uh, zoning hearing board, Trish.
Thank you, um, I don't think the zoning minutes made it in from the last meeting, but there is a meeting this week. We have two items on the agenda. The discussion we had before will not be on the zoning agenda for this week.
Any public comments on planning zoning maybe I. Or none?
You have two.
So.
Old Kuma Road, Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. Um, I'm curious what the chapter, I believe it's one oh five permit is for. Is it for the stream or for the wetland that something's to go into a culvert? Um, I'm curious why um the plan is being approved before the DVP permits have gone through. Um, why is the town um not waiting till there's a final plan before approving and um. And rather than approving a conditional plan. It requires um time consuming to go back and double check things to see a final plan, not a conditional plan prior to the vote. Um. The tree survey, uh, the trees that are being lost and the engineer has multiple um comments that. They wanted to be addressed and why the plan is being approved prior be prior to those um. Engineering comments being addressed. So I would ask that the vote being tabled today rather than a vote on a preliminary plan and not a final plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
John Harrison fourteen seventy three Hedwig Allison Park. Um, in the last conversation just went on. Um. Mechanus has a problem with water. And if anybody that's on council thinks that's not true. I think you need to wake up or step down. That being said. We're asking for wave, somebody is asking for waivers for a piece of property to reduce what they need to do for retention of water. How in the heck is that possibly help mechanics? There's rules that are put in place for a reason. Why don't we follow them? Because when we don't follow them, we get the giant floods that we have every time we get an inch of rain. An inch of rain over an acre of piece of property is twenty seven thousand gallons of water. If you don't know how much water that is, that's two tanker trucks plus another one that's got seven thousand gallons in it. It carries gasoline to the gas station. So. How do we feel comfortable in letting that water roll down hill and go into the lower communities? I have family that lives downstream. I live in McCandless. Whose fault is it? Whose problem is it? It's our problem. It's our fault. We have control of it. Why don't we take control of it? And make and do the right thing instead of saying, oh, well, you know what? They're close, so let's just look the other way. Cause every time we do that, it just compounds the problem time and time and time and time and time again. And then what do we have? We have the giant areas upstream here of the municipal building. They get filled with water. So think about what we're doing on this when we're making these votes. I understand people have plans and they they have a great plan or whatever. Make the plan fit what the rules are. Instead of the other way around. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Maybe I should explain this one a little bit more.
RJ, do you wanna come up?
Yeah. No.
Mr. Harrison, let me tell you, this is one that stuck out to me that I grilled both these young ladies on, so I hope they can give you a good explanation as well.
I was, I was sufficiently roasted, um, so and and caveat, I am not an engineer. So I may bail out and ask our town engineer to help me a little bit more with the technicalities. But my understanding is this particular stormwater modification request is related to the, what we call the. Loading area ratio of a stormwater facility. So what that means is, you know, if you've got, I can't do math. But if you, if you've got, you know, a stormwater facility that's this big, you might be allowed to have an area that's this big drain to it. And if you want an area that's this big, then maybe the stormwater facility has to be this size, right? That makes a lot of sense when you're dealing with traditional stormwater detention facilities. Because you need a pond that can sit there and hold all of that water, usually in one place when you have a traditional development. The Eco Village, on the other hand, is their main focus is on sustainability and minimal disturbance to the environment. So a lot of decisions were made in the design to avoid taking down a five hundred year old tree or ten or, you know. Um, they have pretty much placed the buildings and the roads and everything. So that they could have the absolute minimal damage to the existing vegetation as well as encroach as little as possible on those wetlands. Which is what requires that chapter one or five permit that we were talking about earlier. Um, so the Eco Village has designed their stormwater management to have a ton of rain gardens all over this property. So rather than having a stormwater facility that like a big pond takes everything to one place. They basically dispersed those those management facilities throughout the site. Now, due to the way that rain gardens also work, and this is probably where I'm gonna grab the engineer. Um, you don't necessarily need the same size of facility to handle that impervious, well, that runoff. And that's the other thing. Most developments have yards rather than forests. They don't have any of that. You walk straight out into the trees basically in this development. So in this case, while I think that this requirement makes a lot of sense, I've actually never seen a modification request before this development for just this requirement. Usually it's other ones that are a little more common, like slope of a a detention facility or something. Um, this one in particular is because from everything that we've seen and reviewed and reviewed again. For a, through a lot of effort and time. Um, the plan, the stormwater as designed works. And to not grant this modification request would essentially be requiring facilities to be enlarged beyond what they need for their function. And to the overall detriment of the environment that would continue to exist on the site otherwise.
Kelly, what did I miss? Sure, so I'm Kelly, I'm from Gateway Engineers. Uh, we have reviewed this plan two, five times now. Um, so we've made sure to do a really uh third review. The, what RJ was saying about the size, I just wanna clarify, it's not, we're not losing capacity. It's more of the um surface area on the bottom of the pond. So that is reduced, as RJ mentioned, to reduce the amount of uh established vegetation that has to be cut down. But they still have the depth, so they still have that overall capacity. It's just that bottom infiltration area that the code requires a a higher square footage there. So they're not, in a sense, losing any stormwater capacity. It's just being infiltrated in a different manner. Um, it's a guidance from the DEP. In the last code update, um, it was written into McCandless's code to allow us to really assess that. Um, I will say there in the new code as well, we now have a one and two year storm, so those are the most common storms that we see. We're requiring all developments to reduce those by fifty percent. So that means if we get, you know, a hundred percent of water coming into the basin. It can only fifty percent of that can leave at one time when we're talking about velocity. So really this code, uh, we go through with a fine tooth comb to make sure that we are meeting the requirements. And where we do see, you know, a facility that's coming in that is promoting green infrastructure. We do wanna make sure that we are looking at this holistically because we will change the land coverage if we do cut down those trees and make it into a meadow. As we all know, same thing if you put impervious, you're gonna have more runoff than you would woods. Similar if you put uh grasslands where you have established trees, vegetation with a thick undergrowth, you're also gonna see higher runoff. So it's really about finding that balance in this one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on planning and zoning committees? Okay, uh, we'll turn it over to Mr. Giorgetti.
Report of Recreation Committee Liaison Reports Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center, Mr. Hart.
There was a meeting for the finance, uh, development promotional committee. Uh, the meetings uh online and uh in uh minutes are in your packet. We had over a hundred people visit the HCC during Community Day and made over a hundred fifty dollars in selling refreshments at the. Uh, Community Day Car Cruise on Refresh. Uh, that's it.
Activities Advisory Ad Hoc Committee, Ms. Clonan.
Thank you, um, uh, Mrs. Kostic did uh put a report in the packet for review. And the next meeting will be October seventh, getting ready to plan the winter fest.
Thank you very much. I just wanna second what you said at the very start of our meeting that it was the best community day that we've had yet. So I think everyone who had a, so thank you.
Lots of volunteers working on it and we can use more.
Is there any public comment on recreation committee items? Here are none. I'll turn it over for the town manager's report.
Well, thank you very much. Been a busy uh month transitioning the the newly appointed town manager uh to the position here. Uh, we've had routine meetings and uh he's been actively involved, so he's not going to be hitting the ground uh, you know, fresh. He's going to come in season and uh, you know, fully indoctrinated with what's been going on, so which is great. Uh, we've also been uh interviewing for the executive assistant replacement. Uh, there'll be uh a hire made on that shortly uh for a a replacement there. And the uh several uh projects have been, were were listed in the uh report. Uh, one item of note was that the uh Parks and Recreation Parks Master Plan Award Letter was issued to uh Pashik. Uh, we've not set up a notice to proceed uh meeting yet, uh but there is, uh, that is imminent for us to be working on that. Uh, you also be voting tonight on uh an award for the uh Traffic Signal Project uh this evening, which there's some work done on that this week. And uh, that's everything for my report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the engineers report is in your packets. Uh, Kelly is here if there are any questions. Questions? Okay, uh, the town attorney's reports.
I do not have a public report in your packet, and if you have any questions, we are having an executive session following the meeting. And discuss uh real property matters and we can talk about it then.
Yeah, uh, new business. Uh, first item up here is a travel's traffic signal component upgrade. Uh, this is a motion to award it uh to SET.
Motion to award uh traffic uh signal up a component upgrade to SET Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and seventy four thousand dollars.
There's a motion on the table, a second by Mr. Casey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number B is that simple subdivision, um, RJ kinda went over it earlier. I think it's pretty cut and dry. Is there a motion?
Oh, make it.
Mr. Giorgetti.
Motion to approve the SRAM simple subdivision application located at ninety seven fifteen Harmony Drive contingent upon all items being addressed. In the Town Engineers Review Letter dated August nineteenth, two thousand twenty four and any other subsequently issued review letters.
There's been a motion second by Mr. Arlo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number C, uh, these are typical of developments. This is a bond reduction request. This is not the final. Um, this is as a result of the fasting reform plans. Um, it's pretty standard. Gateway has reviewed it. Um, is there a motion for this?
Motion.
Okay.
Trish. Motion to approve a partial release of bond reduction request number five submitted by HF Property Development LLC. For the passenger farms planned in the amount of eighty three thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars twenty six cents. As recommended by the Town Engineers Review Letter dated September eighteen, twenty twenty four.
There's been a motion. Is there a second, Mr. Casey? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next part here, we are going to get into the specific uh modifications for the Echo Village. Uh, the first one up is the uh waving of the sidewalks uh in lieu of the emergency vehicle. Is there a motion for this? Do you wanna, I'm sorry.
So we were, we were trying.
You're gonna do them all together instead of. Let, let's have a quick discussion at council. Do we wanna do these individual? Do we wanna lump them together? We've all reviewed them. Is there any further? Do we wanna have more in-depth discussion? Let me ask the question. Do we wanna have more in-depth discussion on any of these?
No.
Pending none, if there's a way to bring these together as one.
I think um what we would do is the motion at D, we just read that and it would be uh. One through six and then number seven under there. That starts preliminary, final.
Let's do seven, seven, that's fine. Okay, so does everybody understand that we will read uh number D, uh the, that who is willing to make the motion? With uh one through six being listed underneath of it.
Motion.
Mr. Hart.
Motion to approve uh the preliminary final land development application for the Rachel Carson Eco Village with the modification request. As listed one through six.
So there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Giorgetti, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number seven is the actual uh village uh preliminary final. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the preliminary final land development application for the Rachel Carson Eco Village submitted by Race. Rachel Carson Eco Village Incorporated. Located on vacant wooded land on Cumberland Road adjacent to the Sisters of Divine Providence campus. Contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the Planning and Development Staff Report dated September seventeen, twenty twenty four. Town Engineers Review Letter dated September sixteen, twenty twenty four and any other sub- sequentially issued review letters.
There has been a motion. Is there a second, sir? Mr. Arlo, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, at this time, uh, there is public comment for any non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name and address. There being none, uh, then we are going to adjourn into executive session for property matters. Is there a motion to adjourn? Make a motion adjourn, motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Casey. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.
I think they just hold off because.